The Thursday, September 12th, 2024 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marvel, he is absent.
Mr. Maxim.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Race is absent. She is actually up in.
Mackinac.
On Mackinac Island for the.
Oh, the conference?
Conference, yeah.
Ms. Edgerton.
Here.
I would make a, can somebody make a motion to excuse?
I'd make a motion to excuse.
Port.
Aye.
Those opposed? The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Any public comments?
Perry Hopkins, 90 North Main Street. I'd like to throw my two or three cents in on the discussion of the short-term stays. I've heard council's comments last month, and I also have watched a couple of the planning commission meetings and their questions. And I think it's a, it'd be an advancement for our community to allow bed and breakfasts as well as Airbnb. There's a lot of people that may only have a room that they're renting out, not a full house. Those that may be gone in the winter, they may want to let their neighbor watch their house while they rent it out and make a little income while they're gone. But like buildings like the one I'm in, the Morley Building, my landlord would like to use one of the rental spaces that are in there as a bed and breakfast at some point. And if we don't allow short-term stays under 30 days, that doesn't allow bed and breakfasts in town. And I know that there is a shortage of housing pretty much all over. But does that mean there's a housing shortage? So the only thing we can have is motels and hotels for people to stay in? That doesn't make economic sense to me when you have other ways that most of us, when we travel, there's a lot of us in this community that stay in bed and breakfasts or Airbnbs, not just hotels. So if we're willing to do that, when we go to other communities, we should allow people, when they come to our community, to be able to stay in short-term stays without having to be in a hotel or on a neighbor's couch when there's other opportunities. Because in this last year alone, we've had at least four events that we've had more than a thousand to 2,000 people stay at, and they're all are coming to attend, and they're not all from Cedar Springs. There's graduations, there's weddings, there's open houses, and not everybody can get along with their family members for a full weekend. Some people, two hours max.
Great argument. I'm sorry.
Everybody knows what I mean. And, you know, in a one-hotel town, granted, when you look at Cedar Springs, we're what, 3,700 people or whatever, but Cedar Springs surrounding area has a lot more than that. And so to limit it to just staying at the hotel or staying in another town, it doesn't really do our community justice. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Wolf, 15290 Tisto. First, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Rose. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend her Rose Powell Day, but I, I know you all know it, and I just want to publicly acknowledge her. Try not to get too emotional. I've been able to go, I went to high school with her. We graduated together, so I've known her 50-some years. But never, ever once have I been anything but proud that she represents our community. And I mean extremely proud in every single way. She is respectful. She is hardworking. I've seen her picking stones. I've seen her pulling weeds. I've seen her picking up garbage. And then I see her go to meeting after meeting and always representing us with dignity, credibility, just everything that I am just proud to say I know Rose Powell because she is one in a million. So, thank you, Rose. You've made such a positive impact. And I know you won't be done with everything, but this was huge. When you serve on city council, you're putting yourself out there. And welcome, Mr. Maxim. How cool that you're here. So, thank you. Secondly, I want to make sure you know about the upcoming community gala. It's a week from Saturday, and this is really a celebration of you guys and the team, the Cedar Springs team, which is huge, thousands of people. And I'd love to see you there, just to get together, to see each other, to reminisce and to just celebrate Cedar Springs. I left some extra invitations if you didn't get one. And then thirdly, I guess I can just repeat what Perry just said. I usually agree with most everything he says anyway, but I would ask that you please consider the short-term rentals. I've attended the last couple of planning commission meetings. The planning commission is taking this very serious, putting some great, the chairman is doing a super job bringing a healthy discussion, and I think they're right on track. I heard some of the concerns that were read at the meeting. I even want one more step to just specifically outline some real good reasons I think you should adopt it and adopt an ordinance. And I did print them out and left them there, but number one, it promotes our city and our community by allowing folks to come here for a short period of time. And it doesn't have to be a lease or a long-term rental. And as he mentioned, there are so many activities, events, right here in Cedar Springs, weddings, graduations, anniversaries, reunions, Red Flannel Day. This bike race now is huge, but not just here, our neighbors, Sparta, Rockford, Grand Rapids, Greenville. All of those communities have special events that bring in out-of-town guests. So that's number one. Number two, it does address our national, state, and local housing shortage. I mean, everybody knows that is a fact. Traditional rentals aren't always an option, but short-term rentals will get folks in town when permanent housing isn't available. And we know permanent housing isn't available, so that's a fact. Why not be part of the solution to this national housing shortage? Number three, it provides affordable housing, which is another national issue. A short-term agreement may be affordable for some folks. They may not necessarily have over $1,000 cash in their pocket for a rental agreement or for a lease or for to buy a house. Number four, it establishes clear legal requirements for properties involved in short-term. We all know they're going on right now.
Try and wrap it up because we're going on four minutes here.
And then it's an incentive for property owners to keep their property up. Those pictures are online. Those comments are online. Number six, economic. Business in town, those people are going to eat here, shop here, get to know. So there's economic. Number seven, it just is safer. It's a safer option for families that don't want their kids in motel rooms. So it's safe. I'm condensing these because you can read them. Number eight, you would be helping perhaps someone in a crisis or hardship. Maybe they had a fire, a tornado, a tree damage. Maybe they have a medical crisis going on. Maybe they have a divorce. Maybe they have some other personal injury. You'd be helping them. And last is it mandates the requirements which protect your neighborhoods. If you have clear requirements, it protects your neighborhoods. So those are nine reasons that come to my mind. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Either raise your hand or unmute yourself? As a public? Okay.
Hi, lovely Rose. We're three weeks from Red Flannel Day, so I thought I'd read this article from the founder of Red Flannel Day and of the, one of the ladies, Nine of Abbot. Her and Grace bought the newspaper when they moved to Cedar Springs. The Clipper. So anyway, she was a fabulous author, and one thing she wrote as every week was an article. She were something about the city. So this was shortly after World War I, and as World War II was approaching, she wrote this, "The world, or at least the considerable part of the wagath this week," that was the name of her article, "As the World Wags." "Along the red flannel way and Cedar Springs with this red flannel festival finds itself the center of national attention." Now, these folks knew people all over the world. "Those who weep over the passing of olden days, of customs, times of yesteryear need only to hear of Cedar Springs Red Flannel Day, which is Saturday, the first Saturday of October." But originally, it was celebrated on Armistice Day, which was the day of the end of World War I, and then it was changed. So to be cheered in the world of horrors of war, we pause to remember that Saturday is Armistice Day. And that was the end of World War I, of course. "How wonderful that our land is free from the horror, that we can indulge in the frivolity of Red Flannel Day, give thanks, that we can be cheery and pray that it may continue." And that was our dear Nine of Abbot.
Thank you, Rose.
All right, we don't have any public hearings, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can somebody make a?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to, well, is there anything we need to?
Any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Maxim?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Edgerton votes yes. Five zero. Then we move on to the consent agenda? Or do we do anything?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Edgerton votes yes. Passes five zero. Okay, we move on to action items.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve $25,000 from reserves to create a six parking, create six parking spaces and sidewalk on Maple Street with Dean's Landscaping.
I'll second that.
Do you want it in an amount not to exceed $25,000?
We have somebody coming up with the other part of it.
Well, no, I.
Request is for the 25, so I think that'd be sufficient enough to say not to exceed. Okay.
Discussion.
That is, in case people don't know where that is, I've had a couple of people approach me on that. The green space where the fire department used to be, right near the road, there's room for six parking spots, and that's going to be the place that it's at. So it shouldn't be a big disruption to the actual library parking, just additional six spots.
Did you have anything to add?
I do not. Nope, that's exactly right. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we got you.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if there's any other discussion. Are we pretty set on that? Ready to vote? Okay, Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Edgerton votes yes. Harry's five zero.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve MEDC's grant to reimburse West Street property brownfield expenses to prepare to sell the property.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. Falcon, do you have anything?
I don't. So The Right Place, Travis Alden from The Right Place gave me a call and said, hey, I got some grant money. We can help you, you know, prepare to sell the West Street property, so they are going to reimburse us for the RFP that Fishbeck helped us prepare. That was $2,850. And this will also reimburse us for any Phase One or Phase Two environmental site assessments that we need to have. Anytime we sell a property, at that time, a new assessment needs to be completed, so that will reimburse us for all that as well. So wonderful news. Absolutely. I'll take grant dollars any day to reimburse us for costs like that.
Wowoo. Definitely. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All right. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Maxim?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Edgerton votes yes. Passes five zero. Motion, oh, go ahead. Anybody would like to make the motion to approve Resolution 2024-24, a resolution to authorize issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-24, a resolution to authorize the issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Mrs. Falcon?
So this, yeah, so this is the next step to stay on the track that we had originally scheduled earlier this year for a closing on or around November 7th. This will authorize bond council to begin all the things that they need to do to sell the bonds, and then we would be closing on or around November 7th.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it's a good move on my, on my decision, is that this is the right way to go.
I agree. I was very excited when I saw that text. I was like, yes, this can be.
Yep.
No? Okay, let's vote. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Max?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Edgerton votes yes. Motion to approve Resolution 2024-24, a resolution to authorize issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds passes five zero. All right, we're on to discussion items. New Year's Ball Drop. Close Main Street, Ash Street to Oak Street, 7:30 PM to 2 AM. First reading.
Ms. Falcon?
Yeah, so anytime we close the streets, we need council approval for that. This is the second year of this event. No problems with the event, but, but again, like I said, the street closing. Hoping to close from Ash Street to Oak Street, so we will prepare with Public Works Department and the Police Department to do that. That's pretty much all.
Do we have to wait?
Pardon me?
Do we make a motion yet, or do we have to wait for a second?
You, you can. If you had questions that I don't know the answer, we could do a second reading. Pretty much same as last year from what the chamber, you know, the application states, so.
This is a community event?
Community event, yep.
So, because we usually hear community events twice before we vote on it, so that people can.
Change.
Yes.
And, I mean, I think, unless, do you, do you need a motion on it tonight?
No. No.
Right. But I mean, it's, it is September, so.
Are there, are there things you may want to increase or decrease of?
Perry, you may take the, the stand. Yeah, it's okay. Take the stand.
Only to the mic.
Yes, please.
Not everybody has the big loud teacher voice.
Change. The only changes that we're calling. Thing is, there may potentially be a band. Scott's music started by having a band on the patio versus doing the radio station. There was other discussion that somebody wanting to have Chick-fil-A and like, we are not putting $7,000 into a band intent because they would require a tent that by the time we're done, you're talking 7, 8,000. We only spent just under 8,000 last year on the entire thing. I don't want to put that in the music in a tent. But, so there most likely will be a small band on the patio in front of Scott's Music. And then we had quite a few comments about not enough food presence, so we're trying to work with some of the local establishments that are not in the B2, like Arctic Cuts, but they said they're not set up for it. I've reached out to no-no's to see if they want to come down and sell pizza or whatever, but I haven't heard any feedback. So we're trying to work with ones that pay taxes here versus just calling in food trucks. With the exception of going to South Side Street, so you can still access Oak and Get Around, and then going down to Ash Street here so that, because we filled them two blocks up last year when it got close to midnight. So we don't want to have people going past the barricades when they're standing there trying to watch the ball drop.
This question. So this is in the social district, correct? Currently, the social district, we have to stop serving alcohol at 11? 10? What is, what is our time on the social district? Because I feel like maybe we need to have an extension.
I think it's like. Like it was 11.
Is it 11?
I don't, I know we extended it. I don't remember if it was 11 or midnight. I'm sorry.
I'm not clear on it in my brain because we had a big, long conversation about what time the marijuana stores could sell and how that related. And, and then there's the whole, they can serve alcohol inside until 2.
Well, the, the restaurants are going to be closing down by 11:30, so everybody's out in the street. At least from what I've, the comprehension of what I've talked to them. So we're, we're having the event itself go until like 12:30, and then the rest of that time is cleanup. Because we're not entertaining people to stay until wee hours of the morning.
You needed to be able to serve until midnight if you have people that want to be able to toast the ball dropping. That was my.
Yeah, it'd probably be good to have until midnight, just in case they have a long line and they're like, oh, it's after 11:30.
Something like that, so you can.
I.
I, just my, like, I would certainly not have a problem with that. I don't know if, like, and I don't know if, like, I feel like we would have to vote to do that. Like, that's my.
We can wait till next weekend when we get all these things figured out.
Yeah.
And I'm saying this is part of what maybe we need to address for.
Verify.
For the next thing. And would that be part of your request is to have the time extended till 12:30 or 12:15 or whatever for serving alcohol in the social district?
Go till 12 would be good because like I said, the restaurants or the brewery and the Red Burger would be closed down by the time the ball drops.
Serving, but the issue is if you've got to finish your drink that you got for midnight.
Make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Ralph.
Rather than us argue for it at this point in time, let's give him the opportunity to think it over and come back. When we bring it to a vote and anything he's going to amend, I fully trust anything that he puts together because it's done very well. So let them have the chance to make that determination. We don't need, we don't need to discuss it at this point in time.
Okay.
Application from last year asked for the social district to be open until 12:30 AM, and it looks like we approved that last year.
We're good to go then.
The application hasn't been approved this year yet because you guys haven't voted on that, but I would imagine I'll double check and see what you asked for this year, but last year you did ask for that.
It's just rewrote the same. I copied it and waited out some things, and then we added in that we wanted the extra block.
Are pleased to have to be trying to like kick people off the street.
That's what I'm getting to. Whatever he comes, what he comes in with for the final vote, that's what we will vote on. Okay. We don't, we don't need to design and determine what he wants to do. Okay.
We'll move on and vote on that next month.
Making sure that it was in there. Okay.
Um, then we're on to communications. Do we have anything, April? Can we see Daryl's face too? Are you done? I knew you had it. What do you got for me, ma'am? You got anything?
My turn?
Yeah.
Yes. Just a couple of things. So I am on the island right now at the MML convention. I've already attended a couple excellent sessions. I can't wait to get back and talk with my staff and you all about what I'm learning here. Some, some changes coming, so we need to prepare, right? Um, I'm really impressed with Heritage Park. I'm really loving seeing the progress that is being made there. We had a progress meeting Monday this week. They do plan to be completely done by September 27th, so will be done by Red Flannel. Um, what else? VNR trust fund grant, I still haven't heard when that's going to be funded, so for now, that project is still on hold. I did send out September 2nd, 17 emails to different developers regarding the West Street property. I did hear back from three of them already. They intend to submit something, so submissions, RFPs are due November 1st. I'm really excited to review them and, and make some progress on that property. And then the Chamber of Commerce has set September 25th, 5:00 PM for a ribbon cutting at Heritage Park. So I hope everybody can attend that.
Again?
That's all I have.
September 22nd, 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there? Okay. Okay, Department of Public Works. Tanya?
Hi, good evening. Um, so we painted the Jungle Gym down at Royal Park. Obviously, we took the flags down on Main Street. We'll be putting up flannels on Monday for the red flannel. We painted the restroom down at Morley Park, so our next painting project will be the little storage building over by the staging area. We're going to paint that same color so everything matches. Other than that, just our daily, daily routine that we've been doing.
The cemetery has continued to look very nice all summer. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're going to start string trimming. We started a little bit, but we're going to start string trimming for the fall so that way the leaves don't get caught between the headstones.
Thank you.
That's it. That's all I have. Thanks.
Whole town just looks very nice.
Yeah, it does. I agree.
You all are doing a wonderful job. And when is, is, don't we have brush pickup coming up?
Yep, the 23rd. So we'll start brush pickup on the 23rd. We'll make one round through town, and then that's it.
Okay, so how soon can they put their stuff out?
Oh, there's people already putting it out. They've been putting it out since we got that last storm. So we'll just come through and pick up what we can get.
Okay.
Thanks.
Much. Law enforcement, he's not here today. Do we have anything from, we got his report? Okay. Fire Department, Mr. Detlaw?
We had a nice, quiet end of summer. Nothing major is going through, so we're winding down most of our summer application stuff. We were going through like spraying the kids down and music in the park and all that stuff is starting to wind down. Now we're into fall, which, everything, all of those, make sure people start dealing with burning leaves, and that's. But other than that, we're actually on par with calls from last year, so I'm not expecting anything significant to increase, which is good. But where we're at.
Hey, any news on the fire truck?
Getting some quotes in. They're going right directly to Darla and Greg going through. We're still waiting for one more to go through. So I'm ecstatic to finally get it moving.
Yeah, absolutely.
A member of the community asked me. A member of the community asked me about the truck, um, want, wondering who had it in the possession. Um, and, um, what we were doing, um, to get it fixed. So I did assure them that we have it, and we're working on it, we're working on it. Do you know anything more about that, Mrs. Falcon?
Nope, we're just like Ta, Troy said, we're waiting for one more quote, I'm hoping to bring them to you in October. Because that will be a, a council vote to take money out of fund balance to have that truck fixed, so completely.
I also had a citizen contact me about, want to know where it was at, how close it was being ready, being done to be used for infill annual day and so forth. Advised them where we were on it, and uh, I also advised them that it probably was not going to be used as it was before, at least that isn't my intent. Uh, when it's used and brought back, it'll be primarily a parade truck. And not necessarily for the Keystone Cops, because uh, having been one of them, I know the truck was abused at that time, and uh, once we get it fixed up, it resp, you know, deserves more respect than what we were giving it, so.
Over a hundred years?
So it's got to be between, uh, twenty eight and thirty one, nineteen twenty eight and thirty one, so.
Almost a hundred.
Like I said, that was the first truck we ever had. And uh, there was a picture around, I wish I could remember where I saw it. Okay, and it was on a flatbed uh, rail car. And it was shipped in by rail car.
Grab those pictures and make like a historical.
What ones I have, I don't think I have the one of it on the flat car, but we do have some black and white ones with the original CSFD on it. It's going to be hard to tell color on it, um, we think we're close to the right color that was originally sent.
The community that has any pictures, that'd be great if you get them to the fire station, that would help us get everything together, or City Hall, whatever you, yeah, decide. Okay, um. Yes, thank you.
Fire truck is out.
Hey, great.
Finally went through all of the, the documentation, all the requests and gone through, it is now live, it went out on October twelfth.
Great.
Just to the cost.
What's that?
To the cost?
Yeah, um, right now, um, Kent County is predicting that it could be up to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-four percent increase over the last three years.
Surprise.
Significant, um, once we get through the bids, my goal is to have the quotes back before, um, our next meeting in November. So you have proper bids, proper quotes, so we know exactly where we're going to be, and we can start finishing up what we need for in twenty twenty six. I, I'm going to guess in the eight hundred thousand range.
I was going to guess over a million, so.
Not much, thank God, and, and we've also taken a lot of steps to try to keep the cost down as much as possible, you know.
I have no, that doesn't make it not what it is. Is that a brand new truck?
Is that a brand new truck? Okay.
Any truck that we share, um, with the Kent County, they pay a portion.
Every seventeen years or fifteen years, what?
Depends on the number of actual participants in Kent County, because it's been fifteen years for quite a while.
Put a chunk in every year to, so is the eight, with the eight hundred thousand, and again, I'm not holding you to that amount. Um, is that in addition to like the county's chunk that they're? Oh, okay.
Kent County distributes like two hundred thousand, I think we have about two twenty, two thirty saved already. Um, and as we go through, I think there'll be a shortfall, probably in the three hundred, three fifty ranges.
That could be, that could be worse.
If the cost would stay consistent, Marty was putting enough as well as Jerry when they were doing this, to put enough that we would be okay, but it's just with this much of an increase, it's difficult to predict.
Price of no one. I mean, I didn't mean that to say like they didn't put in, I mean, they should have had a crystal ball and predicted it, but I'm saying, it's, it's not shocking.
I, as well as Chief could say now, there was no way to predict exactly what it was going to be. So you can only get what you can get, and uh, so.
I'm impressed.
And that's it, these numbers are all hypothetical, I have no idea where we're going, they could come down, you know, six fifty, we wouldn't, we won't know, that's the whole purpose of blind bids.
Yeah, sure. Good about our finance department, um, making sure that we have money for, in the future, we're, we're, they've done really a, an excellent job of getting that through.
Yes, thank you Darla.
That's pretty special.
The fire station.
Deputy Clark?
So Rebecca did include a report in your packet, but there are a couple things since then that I just wanted to add. Um, mentioning that the general election is on its way, it's right around the corner. We should have the ballots delivered to us by the twenty first of September. So if anyone votes absentee, we'll be getting those out hopefully the following week. So towards the end of the month, everyone should start seeing their absentee ballots kind of roll in. And we have our public accuracy testing already scheduled for, um, September twenty sixth at four PM.
And what is the first day of early voting?
October twenty?
This is new, so, we haven't we haven't, we don't have a long history of doing this, October twenty sixth? People can come in to vote in person early, act thirty, October twenty sixth, you can come in to vote.
Day up until the Monday before the election, the Monday before the election, we close the precinct down, so we can switch over and prepare for Election Day the next day.
Oh, October twenty sixth, one more time, October twenty sixth from eight thirty to four thirty? You can come to City Hall if you are a resident of the city of Cedar Springs, and you can vote in person, it's not even an absentee vote, it is in-person voting early.
Can also bring their absentee ballot in, if they choose to run it through a machine, if they change their mind and they don't want to drop it off, they can come in during that timeframe and run it through. It definitely saves on time and lines and all of that stuff, so.
Request absentee ballot?
Um, at this point in time, you mean, or, yes, yep. Request an absentee ballot up until I believe it's like four o'clock the Friday before the election, and then they have to go into the emergency request for absentee.
Okay, like if you were in the hospital or got hit by a car.
See reason for us to be able to provide you with one after that timeframe.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Much for, um, running the meeting tonight, helping us. For work also.
And pass along to Rebecca, thank you, this, all of this election stuff is a super big deal.
Absolutely, well.
All right, Finance Director, Slandon.
Yes, so I've officially been with the city for one year. So, yeah, it's been a great year, and I've, oh, no, that's okay, but um, I've learned so much over the last year, and it's been a great experience, everyone's been super helpful and super amazing, and um, so I'm excited for what the future holds and what I'm going to continue to learn, it seems like I'm still learning stuff every single day, so. Um, with that being said, I am attending a fall conference for treasures in a couple weeks, so that'll be another opportunity for me to expand on um, what I've already learned, and just a great net, networking opportunity. Um, this last week has been super busy, as you guys know, tax payments are coming due for summer. Um, this week, we've collected a lot of tax payments. Um, we are at eighty-two percent collected now, whereas last week when I sent my report out, we were at thirty-two percent, so that's fifty percent of taxes being paid this week, so that's a lot, that's huge. Um, and then also, we've been working through the audit, so that's been taking up a lot of time, and we did receive a draft of the audit, so the final um, version of that is in process, and we should have those soon, so um, in the next month or two, probably Doug will come out and do a presentation to walk all of you through the audit, and you'll have a copy of your own as well, so. Um, yeah, we'll have that coming soon, so that's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council comments, I believe we're at. Yeah, we don't have code, yep. Lots of comments, so let's start with Ms. Powell.
Okay, I guess the exciting news is Red Flannel Day coming up, we have five young incredible young women running for our Red Flannel Queen Scholarship and if you get a chance to go to the Queen Contest, go, because you, you just can't imagine how smart and brilliant personalities these women have, and I'm so proud of them all. Proud of the, um, board that's working their guts out as usual. If you see any of those board members, be sure and thank them, you just, it's, they work so hard, it just brings tears to my eyes. I adore and love them all, and, um, enjoy working at the office, drop in and we'll chit chat, and it's a great it's a great pleasure to just be part of it, I, I would never want to be on the board though, that is just terribly hard work. And looking forward to the, um, ribbon cutting at Heritage Park, but I won't be here, so I'll have to manage without me. And thank you for, the Chamber for putting that on, I appreciate it, and thank you to everybody that's here, and carry on.
Um, yeah, we, we've got a lot of good stuff going on, um, in Cedar, uh, that time of year again. Uh, obviously, Red Flannel Day coming up, uh, people are starting to get exciting about that. Uh, Red Hawk Football is, is going full strength. Um, we've got a lot of great, uh, infrastructure projects, as well as, uh, fun stuff like Heritage Park. Um, so I'm really looking forward to going into the season and, 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 uh, looking forward to all the great things that are coming.
I agree with Mr. Maxim, uh, only I'll expand upon it a little bit. Uh, we as a community have a great group uh, young people that attend our school system. And, uh, this comes down to the fact that the Cedar Springs community is not only in the city. It's an entirety of all of the people around us that support us and so on and so forth, so. Uh, and the school system, so, uh, that's greatly appreciated. I'd like to make a couple of comments on the short-term rentals. The reason that it came up, and I was one of those that was probably more vocal and questioning why we were doing it, because it was all of a sudden here. Okay, all I wanted to know is where's the data, what is it we need, and where was it presented? That gave us a reason to be looking at it. To me, a rental is a rental. If it's a short-term rental party house, and that's all it is, then I would have some reservations. I have no problem with a property being rented for a weekend, a week, or whatever, it's a rental. Now, specifically to come in and have a party and be out of here, then I have a little bit of a problem for that, so, uh, and that's one of the things, just I had asked to show me the need, which, based on our speakers tonight, uh, from the community, they're obviously expressing that need, and I understand, not many people are going to use a short-term rental the way I was thinking with short-term rental. Okay? A rental is whatever length of time you choose to rent to someone. To me, and that's just a rental. I didn't want it to be a party destination where we had the legal ramifications of might come along with it. And the hardship for the neighbors that were in the neighborhood, so, uh, just to make that clear. I am not against rentals in the community, I think they're necessary and required. Just how do we classify it, so, and that's it, so. That's it.
Vote. Make sure you vote. Make sure you vote. Everybody, make sure you vote. It's a big deal. And then, Red Flannel Day. Are we keeping City Hall open?
I was going to address that.
Because I
When I spoke.
Okay, because I will, I will take a shift again, but we probably need to have that.
Yeah, we're, um, Mrs. Falcon, did we decide, what time, what time did we decide we're going to open the doors? Oh, I don't, she's muted, you're muted right now.
Muted.
I thought we were going to let the number of volunteers determine that, if we only had one volunteer, then whatever hours they were available. If we have multiple people, we can combine hours together and determine that.
Okay, I will take that on then, um.
Okay.
That, we'll figure that out, so let me know, um, we try and be open on Red Flannel Day, so we have some bathrooms and and, um, information, we can give information to the community, we can take in like a lost child or
Place for the
Yeah, yeah, so we're usually open until the, um, uh, parade. Um, so if you could get ahold of me and let me know what hours you're available, that would be great, um. Mrs. Falcon isn't going to be available that day, is that still?
That is correct.
Okay, so she's not going to be available that day, she's usually here, but she hasn't, she cannot be here this year, so let me know, and I'll take I'll, I'll, um, take care of the, um, the hours and stuff, if you can just get, get, get ahold of me. Okay?
Good enough, that's my, so, make sure you vote, and please talk to about what your hours of availability are for helping to keep City Hall open on Red Flannel Day. I always have historically taken like a half an hour before the parade, and then the parade, and then until whenever the last lost kid or missing person is picked up after the parade, so, and I will do that again.
And I usually like to start at the beginning, then I can open the door and stuff, um, but whatever, you guys, it's just it's kind of putting our presence out there too, that we care about, we're still a part of Red Flannel, and we care about, you know, they're being able to get, um, some information and help.
And we have, um, we have one more meeting, but are we planning on doing the Spooktacular Halloween?
Are we giving out candy? Um, I think so, um, yeah, we'll probably need some people for that. Yeah, we, we need some people for that, so we'll, we'll figure that out, why don't you take that one on?
Okay, you want, I did last year, Rose and I
Did it with I mean, if you want to get some other, if other people are willing to help.
I and Miss Falcon last year.
I, I did a a car, so that there would be cars there.
That's good too.
Oh my gosh, ran out last year, so you need a lot.
Are you planning the trunk or treat again? Okay, has, is there a, like, do we have a, do we have a thing? Do we have a community event thing?
It was okay, because it was the same.
Okay, yeah. It's fine. I just, I just don't remember seeing it, it doesn't mean it's not here, so.
Is that right, Mrs. Falcon?
Yep, it's already been approved.
Mr. Gross will tell us, yeah.
Here for it, I
Okay.
Love Halloween. I just want to make sure, we
Okay, so if you want to, if you want to help, um, hand out candy at City Hall, City Hall for the Spooktacular, let Mrs. Conley know, she's going to take that on. I'm going to be in a, in a vehicle down the road, because there weren't that many last year, so I kind of made, made sure that I was part of that, so.
Well, and you have your grandkids with you.
Yeah, usually, yeah.
I mean, they're
Yep, they did, they came and went down around and whatever, okay. Um, also, uh, like, I, I just love the fact that, um, our ladies are at, um, the MML Conference, and, um, Rebecca is at a convention, and Emily is, um, going, um, to, to get more education, um, they are on top of it here at the City Hall. The, everything that's put in front of them, they're doing, um, it's making our, our staff so knowledgeable and helpful to us, because we're nothing without them, we get, they give us so much information that for, that we can get out of a meeting before eight o'clock, it's, it's just amazing. I don't know, if we have nothing else, I would call the music, meeting to adjournment at seven forty-nine PM. Okay.
So what time is it?